Welcome to this special edition of Local Point. I'm your host Dale Allred. On today's show, we've invited local and state school board candidates who will be on the ballot in the upcoming general election. As Duchenee County's races were determined in the primary election, we will now focus primarily on U ente county and state school board elections. Each candidate will have up to six minutes to respond to questions that we've provided to them in advance. Please stay with us as we introduce you to each candidate. Now joining us is Sharon Bills, who is a candidate for U ente school district number two. Sharon, we welcome you here today.
Thank you for having me.
Would you begin by giving us a little bit of background about yourself?
Yes, I moved out to Vernal in 1971 and have been here ever since we fell in love with this community. I have worked for U ente school district for 38 years. I drove bus for 31 years and the last seven years I've done the routing for U ente school district. So I've got a picture of both inside as an employee and outside. I have done lots of volunteer service in the district. I've been PTA president many times at elementary, secondary levels, the council level. So I know the volunteer side of it. I'm just an average taxpaying citizen, so I can see it from all different sides.
Thank you. So moving into our first question, what do you see as the greatest challenges facing the school district? And if elected, what would you or how do you plan to address those issues?
Okay. I've been thinking about that and I've made a few notes. Some of the things, the district right now is in the process of doing a new tenure plan. We have just completed a tenure plan. First off, let me explain also, I was assigned or chosen, appointed to fill Dr. Allen's seat. So I've had the privilege or the opportunity of being on the board for the past 16 months. So I know a little bit, but I'm still a newbie at things. But having where I've come from and talking to people and things, I think one thing that's really important right now is the division that's amongst the district employees. There is quite a division in there. There's a lack of respect, a lack of professionalism, definitely a lack of trust. And this really concerns me because with all these deficiencies, it filters out and it affects our students and their learning. It's not giving them the best learning environment that they could have. We need to work on that and improve that. Another thing that is on my mind is the SAGE testing. And I know that's state mandated, but I also know that the state is going to start backing off from the SAGE testing a little bit. I feel like that takes so much time, student teacher time away from the teachers and the students that could be put to use. And really, the data is good, but does the data educate our children? You know, we know where they're at, but what are they missing because of trying to collect this data? Another thing that I would really like to see is a lot more local involvement in the school district, on the school board, community participation. I think the community needs to set the standards for our district. You know, we have one high school, two middle schools, and what is it, seven elementary schools. So we're all in this together. We need to set the standards that we want and then let them know. And so community involvement in our schools also. And to accomplish that, you know, I have a favorite saying by Einstein, and it's, everybody is a genius. But if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will spend its whole life believing that it is stupid. And I just don't believe anybody is stupid. We all have our abilities and we all have our talents. We just need to seek them out and develop them. Therefore, we need to encourage this in our students and then we also need to expect it from our classrooms. We need an environment and a culture of love and respect and making everyone feel special like they are. And so that's how I would work. Another thing is, you know, it's up to the school board as representatives of the community to set the high standards for the school district. Then it's up to the administration to enforce those standards. And if those standards are not enforced, then they need to be held responsible for that. Because as a community and our students, we deserve the very best and we want the very best for them. Every opportunity that we can possibly give them.
Thank you. And moving into the next question, we've got about a minute left. Why do you feel like you are best qualified for this office?
Well, having experienced both as an employee and as a volunteer and as a citizen of the community, knowing some of the issues and things, I think that gives me some qualifications. 16 months ago, I retired my job in two days to take this position. And that was quite a culture shock for me and quite a change. I have given it my all. I'm to a point where I have the time to dedicate to this. And most importantly, I have the passion. I want to hear from the community. I want to represent the community and I will represent the community.
Well, thank you Sharon. We appreciate you joining us here today and getting this information out to the voters.
Thank you so much.
We now welcome Kurt Case, who is a candidate running for U ente school district number five. And Kurt, thank you for coming in today. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity.
Well, we'll get right to the first question. And that is, what do you see as the greatest challenges currently facing the U ente school district? And if elected, how do you plan to address those issues?
Well, I think the first thing we need to look at is what is the role of the school board? Each board member is the voice of the people they represent. Teachers, administrators, and school board members all have different roles. And it's important as a school board member that I stay within the role of a school board member, which is different than that of a teacher or an administrator. Each board member is also part of a council that represents the public to the teachers and administrators. So not only do we serve the district that we represent, we are part of a council which involves the other four districts. As a school board member, our goals need to be uniting, not separating. You can have differing opinions without creating contention or separation. We do not need five board members who always think alike. We need board members who bring with them their personal life experiences. But we do need five board members who always work together, always focusing on the objective. Unity requires each board member leaving their personal agendas at home and checking their pride at the door. We cannot change yesterday, but if we're wise, we use yesterday and the experiences of yesterday to change tomorrow.
Thank you. What would you say, or why would you say you are best qualified for this office?
Well, first, let's look at what the purpose of public education is. The purpose of public education is to prepare children for successful lives. And that takes place both inside and outside the classroom. Schools are at the core of the community and they reflect an image of the community in which they serve. I feel it's easier to prevent problems than it is to fix problems. Too often, we spend our time and our energy focusing on yesterday, trying to change yesterday, versus using the experiences of yesterday to try to change tomorrow. When problems surface, they're best solved using constructive, open communication. Seeking first to understand. Oftentimes, when we do not understand a situation, once we probe into it a little bit, something that once didn't make sense to us begins to make sense. And I think sometimes it becomes human nature for us to first want people to understand us versus us trying to understand them. So if we seek first to understand before we worry about being understood. We need to work together and as we work together, we need to keep the focus on what our objective is. My roots run deep in U ente school district. I attended Vernal Junior High and U ente high school. My four children have all attended U ente high school. And my granddaughter starts school next fall. I care about the community in which we live, being a part of many organizations, including the Vernal Area Chamber of Commerce. I was involved in creating what is now the Vernal City, U ente county Parks and Recreation. That was created when I was serving as a president of an association called Vernal Men's Softball Association. We recognized that we needed a Parks and Rec department. I was involved in creating what is called Vernal's Youth Super League Baseball Program. It's called U ente baseball. I've been involved in scouting. I've been involved in coaching little league teams and many other things within our community.
Thank you. And what would you say is the single most important thing that you want voters to remember about you?
Once again, let's go back to what the purpose of public education is. The purpose of public education is to prepare youth for successful lives. And that takes place both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. Unity requires each board member to leave their personal agendas at home. There's no room for your personal agenda. And we have to leave our pride at the door. It's not about us. It's about the youth. Activities such as band and sports teams and cheer and drill teams unite not only the school, but the community. The community gets behind those. And the formula that the state uses to determine a school's classification and the region that they participate in is flawed. It's broken. It uses only total enrollment. And total enrollment, if that's the only component they use, you create an unlevel playing field, which creates frustration.
One minute.
It reduces the students' experience. They need to look at total enrollment, but they also need to look at other components of what a school is. As a concerned community member, I took this thought to Allen Huber, who was serving on the school board, who's taken it to the state level. And I would like to be able to carry it on from there. But lastly, if elected, I want the people to know that first I will listen to what they have to say. Then I think about it. Then I research it and analyze it. And then I will make a final decision. I appreciate the opportunity of being part of this today. Thank you.
And thank you for being here. We now welcome Kevin Dixon, who is a candidate for U ente school district number two. Kevin, such a pleasure to have you here today.
Great being here.
So can you explain to us what you see as the greatest challenges currently facing the U ente school district? And if elected, how you plan to address those issues?
Okay, a lot of the issues facing education, the U ente school district are a little bit different. Some of the big issues in education right now are Common Core, SAGE testing, Utah being the lowest as far as per pupil spending. Those are things we could discuss, but they really don't have a lot to do with the school board. We may have some say or may be able to talk to something, but as far as a huge impact, a local school board really doesn't. To me, the big issues that this school board has, number one is the budget. How do we spend the money? How do we spend it wisely? What's the best way to spend it? And right now, just like the rest of Vernal, times are tough. Times are tough. The funds aren't what are there. We get a lot of the funds from the state that are the same, but still property taxes and things like that are going down. And so the district is losing funds. So now we have to sit down and tighten an already tightened budget, just like everybody else is. So decisions in the budget probably are the number one priority. And this is a tough one, because anytime you make a decision money-wise, some people are going to think that is the greatest use of money. Others see it as a complete waste. So on that, what you have to do is talk to the people that are most involved and hopefully put the money where it makes the greatest impact on kids. Another issue that I believe that we have with this board right now is lack of transparency. We have to be transparent in our government. We have to let people have a voice. We have to let them know what we're thinking before we make decisions. Right now, I kind of see that as lacking. In one of the school boards, probably the next two most important things the school board does, they hire, they're responsible for hiring the superintendent and business administrator. In that meeting, the business administrator's contract came up and it was renewed. One of the board members at that time said, "Why wasn't I involved in this discussion?" It was replied that it was an oversight, but I don't know. I think this board member doesn't necessarily fit with the majority of that board. And I'm not sure if it was an oversight or if it was intentional. But lack of transparency will lead to people thinking about that. And the next thing, obviously, there was a huge meeting in March with the superintendent's contract. As you know, nothing was resolved in that. So this board, I hope it's this board, it could be made, who knows? Because again, lack of transparency. This board will probably determine if the superintendent is renewed or not.
Okay, good. Anything specific that then you would do to address those issues?
The things that you do is, you have to listen to people. You have to listen to the experts. You have to listen to the other board members. And then you vote the way that you see that it should be. But after getting input. The key is getting input and then make the decision. And not everybody is going to, you can't agree with everybody, because there are going to be some people in favor of this, some against. So you have to listen. And then what you make, your decision is, what is best for the education of children?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Why do you feel that you are the best qualified candidate?
I came to teach in Vernal in 1979. I've been around a lot of years. I taught 36 years. I was in education for 36 years. Sharon Bills has been in education almost the same length of time. And for that, I absolutely respect her work with children, protecting them and promoting them. I mean, hats off. That's a great career and I do respect that. During my career, I started out as a teacher at the junior high school. I taught at the junior high for about 10 years. Taught my bulk of it with speech and drama, which continued through. But I also taught math, history, almost every subject imaginable I taught. I was also in charge of the student council at times, doing the school plays and musicals, yearbook. There are a lot of things that I was involved in. About 10 years later, I moved up to the high school, continued with the teaching assignments. I added broadcasting, which quite frankly, this is one of the biggest, one of the proudest moments of an ex-teacher is to see a student so successful in a business like this. Continuing with the plays, I coached almost every sport, but emphasis probably in football and wrestling. Was heavily involved in negotiation and things as an association member, so I worked with boards during that time. Also during that time, I felt that my work with students, I just couldn't imagine a better career than what I had.
Right about one minute.
Okay. Then I moved into administration. I worked at the district office and I was, I had some things that will really help me on the school board when I was at the district office. I helped with the PLCs, the professional learning communities that our district has, and also with the current crisis team plan, which is essential. Student safety is such a priority.
Okay, thank you. What do you feel is the most, the single most important thing that voters should remember about you when they go to the ballot?
I would like them to remember that I have, I have spent my entire career dedicated to teaching the youth in the U ente basin. I want to continue that at a different capacity. If I wanted to have a huge impact on kids...
About 10 seconds.
I would have continued, but it was time to retire. But I do believe I can make a difference. And I think the number one thing is just remember, you pride forever.
Thank you Kevin.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here. And with me in the studio is Greg Gilroy, who is a candidate for U ente school district number five. Greg, welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me today.
We'll go right to our first question, which is, what do you see as the greatest challenges currently facing the U ente school district? And if elected, how do you plan to address those issues?
I think right now, one of our most critical issues is our budget and our financing. As many people out there know, our central taxation, which was a very, a large amount of money for U ente county, got severely hit by the state because our, our energy businesses are down and stuff like that. So we lost approximately a billion dollars in taxation with a good share of that going to the school district. So I think that is a big issue, how we're going to make sure that, that none of our students suffer because of that, that loss in revenue. We've still got to provide a great service to our students to make sure every student has the opportunity to succeed and do the best of their ability. And so we've got to look at different ways to do in business. We've got to look at our capital projects and of course, starting in 2017, we start a new tenure plan. And so we've got to look at ways that we can, can make our budget more efficient. So we don't have to affect our education, but we can still not have to put all the burden on the taxpayers. The district was able to give $4 million back to the taxpayers this year. We can't do that every year. I mean, that's, that's something we can't do every year. So we've got to learn how to be smarter in doing business and taking care of some of these issues and still make sure we offer the greatest services we can to our students and provide also for our employees.
Thank you. Why do you feel like you are best qualified for this office?
Well, I have four years' experience and I tell you that, that is, that is a great benefit of already being involved in this. I think I see what some of our future needs are, some of the things that we have coming before us. There may be an opportunity. I know there's been a lot of issues about Common Core and SAGE testing and things like that. And there's, there's some rumblings out there that some of those things may be changing somewhat. And on the local level, we may get some input in that. And I think, I think it's very important. And also, I think it's important that we do good business with like, I'll mention, we did the deal with Duchenee District on the, on the new union complex. We can't just look at what we're doing today. We have to look down the road for the future. We come up with an agreement that, that was good for the union district or for the union project and the Duchenee School District and also for the U ente school district, which with the life expectancy of that building, will save the U ente school district approximately $10 million in this new agreement. Of course, I'll be long gone when that's there, but, but we still have that, we still have that responsibility to the folks out there and the people that are coming in the future, that we do stuff that is correct and that's going to make our district strong in the future.
Thank you. What is the single most important thing that you want voters to remember about you?
It's kind of a tough question for me because as a board member, we are a board. And so it's more important to me what people remember as far as a board. On my personal things, as a board, I hope that we are putting our students number one. Our students have to be number one in everything we do. We have to take care of our, our teachers and our employees. I mean, they're the backbone of, of what goes on in our district. Without them and without them being successful, we can't be successful. So we have to take care of those folks. I think we have to ensure every student has the opportunity to be a success in society. We have to provide them with not only the stuff they need academically, but socially also. That's important, I think, in today's time, that we provide our students with, with a social background. I want to be known as being transparent and being fair. I've never...
One minute.
I've never tried to, you know, do things that I underhandedly or that weren't transparent. I think that's very important. I think as a board, we have to work hard to get trust in the public and with, with our employees. As my campaign posters say, you know, "Your voice in education." And I truly feel that. I am the voice of my constituents in education. And I've really enjoyed this opportunity to serve on the school board and, and I hope that I get the opportunity to continue to serve.
Thank you Greg, and we appreciate you being here today.
Thank you so much.
On this episode of Wild Air, we take you to the high U ente wilderness for an archery elk hunt. Then we ride along with a DNR officer as he patrols our local hunting grounds.
We now welcome candidate for U ente school board district number four, Sarah Cranny Lamb. Sarah, thank you and appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please start off by giving us a little bit about yourself, a little bit of background information, please?
Yes. I was born in Duchenee and moved to Vernal when I was four. I started school at the Naples Elementary School and I went all the way through school here. I graduated from U ente high in 1994. My parents still reside here at Stephen Laurel Cranny. And I married Glendon Lamb, who I also went to school with. And my in-laws are Candy and Richard Lamb of La Pointe. I have quite a bit of family that also lives over in La Pointe and in Gusher. And I'm just excited to be here to represent our school. I've got six children in the school district or coming into the school district. And so it's important to be able to represent the values and ethics that I feel are important for them to have while going through school.
Thank you. What would you say are the greatest challenges facing the U ente school district? And if elected, how do you plan to address those issues?
There are issues recently with the school board feeling like they needed to be a little more transparent in their decisions. Two in particular happen to be the superintendent, Mark Dawkins, and the way that the community and, and the schools feel about him versus the way that the school board voted for him and the school board as a whole, individuals being represented there with their different views. So I feel like there's a kind of a disconnect between what the community feels is good and right, what the teachers, educators feel is good and right, and what the school board is willing to listen to.
Okay, very good. What would you say, or why would you say you are best qualified to serve as a school board member?
My qualifications are living in this area all my life. I love this area. I love our community. I love that we have friendliness and concern for one another and it's a great place to be. I can contribute common sense to the decisions. At certain decisions, it feels like maybe both sides weren't looked at in fairness and represented in the best way. And I would like to be able to contribute that, making sure that we're looking and hearing from both sides of any issue and making sure that we try and give a fair and probably compromised decision that will benefit both parties or both sides of the issue. I also feel that being married to a Lamb, I would understand specifically some of the also, what I've heard as the west side of the district. And I've got a family that still lives there, a family that has children in the schools over there. The La Pointe principal is my neighbor. And I, we've never had a representative that I can recall from Mazer Dry Fork. And so I also feel like there'd be a good, well-rounded representation of our district for, with, with me.
Thank you. And what do you think is the single most important thing that you would like voters to remember about you?
The biggest one is that I care. And I care about our community. I care about people's viewpoints. I care that there is fairness involved in both those that have minority viewpoints and those that have more of a majority viewpoint. those that have more of a majority viewpoint. And sometimes I think we miss meshing both of those together. A lot of times, I do feel like the minority is more represented, and the majority backs off because they feel like they might be overpowering or labeled as judging. But I think that there's a good balance that we can, we can have there and represent both sides and have even compassion and concern and fairness to have everything represented and looked at in an objective way. And I care.
Thank you, and we really appreciate you coming in today.
Thanks.
We now welcome Tanya McKee, who is a candidate for UNTAs School District Number 4. Tanya, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
All right, well, we want to start out with the first question, which is, why do you feel you're most qualified for this office?
Well, I earned my associate's degree in elementary ed at BYU Idaho. And then I studied business and accounting at BYU Provo. And I did that on academic scholarship. And I feel like the skills and my, my education there really give me valuable skills for the school board. I also think, as a mother of five children that actually lives on the west side, I would be a really good candidate to represent my district. I have served as the PTO president and the PTO secretary and on the community council, and I've been really involved there. And I feel like we really need to have a candidate that actually understands the issues on the west side. We only get one representative on the school board. And because of my involvement in the schools there, I have a really good understanding of their very unique needs.
Okay, very good. What do you see as the greatest challenges currently facing the school district? And if elected, how do you plan to address those issues?
Well, my priority would be to represent my district, which includes several outlying communities on the west end of the county. In the past few years, I've observed a mass exodus of students from the UNTAs School District in my community. And I really don't blame the parents for pulling their kids out, because their needs really aren't being met. These are really involved parents, and they're just doing what's best for their kids. And I fully support their right to do that. But I think that there are some struggles that could be addressed that would really help our schools be more successful in the outlying areas. Schools like La Pointe and Eagleview have really unique needs and really unique concerns. And so they struggle to retain quality teachers. They struggle to even hire enough teachers. They're not fully staffed. We have classes with over 40 students, and parents are pulling their kids out because they don't feel like their needs are going to be addressed. And as a mother, I've experienced the transportation issues and the headaches and the scheduling nightmares on the west end of the county. And I understand some things that could be done. There really are things that can be done. Sometimes we hide behind excuses because they're there and we can use them. But there really are things that can be done to shorten the transportation situation and to make it just more feasible for families to keep their, their children in the school district. I know families that are driving 30 miles to school every day and back just to avoid the scheduling struggles that they experience on the west end. So they have some unique concerns. Also Ballard is a good example of a school that has, of an area that has some unique concerns. A lot of parents there like to send their students to, to Union or to Roosevelt Schools. And as a school board, we need to maintain that relationship with the Duchene School District, so parents have a choice so that they can do what's best for their families and best for their students. And we need a representative that makes that a priority, that understands how important that is to parents. I feel like I'm the only candidate that's running right now that actually lives outside of Vernal, that actually has a vested interest in the success of schools like La Pointe Elementary and Eagleview. And I would really hate to see us lose that representation, because it's, it's so valuable. And I see especially right now, our school, La Pointe, is really struggling. And I would really like it to, to be the vital school that it used to be, because it blesses our entire community. And I feel like we will be more unified as a community if we work together and make this school succeed.
Thank you, very good. What would you say is the single most important thing that you want voters to remember about you?
Most importantly, I want them to remember that I'm the only candidate that understands the issues on the west side. And I'm the only one that has a vested interest in the success of the schools on the west side. I will be in the schools. I will be aware of their needs and concerns, and I will be available to parents and students so that we can address the issues before they become so big that we can't, that we can't solve them. They can always be solved. The problems can always be solved. And, and I'm running for the school board because I believe these problems can be solved.
One minute.
And I would just really like to have representation from the west side. And I would really like to represent the west side and help families get what they need out of the school district and for students to be able to return to the school district.
Tanya, thank you for being here today. We appreciate having you on the program.
Thank you.
We now welcome State Board of Education District Number 12 candidate, Alisa Ellis. Alisa, welcome. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you for having me on. I appreciate it.
Would you start by giving us a little, just a little bit of background about yourself, please?
Okay, I am a mother of seven children. I live in Heber City. I grew up in Texas, but I've lived in Heber for the last 14 years. I have a bachelor's in family science from Brigham Young University. And I've been researching and studying education policy for the last five years very in-depthly, so.
Thank you. So what do you see as the greatest issues facing Utah Public Schools? And if elected, how do you plan to address those issues?
Well, there's an ongoing battle for who controls the classroom. There are powerful forces at battle right now to determine who gets to set education policy and who gets to direct the path of education for our children. But through this battle, there's one group of people that continuously get left out of the process. And that group is you. It's me. It's we, the people, quite frankly. And, and it's a big problem. It's been going on for the last 50 years, where we are moving towards a more centralized system of education. And as a mother, I started looking into what was happening in this centralized system in 2011, and I found that my voice was very minimized because of these powerful structures, structures that are in place to try to set education policy. And I am not tied to any of these power structures. I am here to represent the people, to take the voice of the people back up to the state level so that we can have local control of education and we can truly, as parents, as taxpayers, direct the path of education. Thomas Jefferson said, and I'm going to loosely quote here, that it is a belief be all, and a belief, I'm going to totally slaughter this right now on TV for you, but basically, he's trying to say that it's an unreasonable belief to think that governments or other entities can manage the education of the children better than the families and local taxpayers that they represent. And we have a problem right now where we continuously try to augment the role of the family with government and education systems and, and leave the parents out. They are deemed as stakeholders. So I'm here, as a parent, as a mom of seven kids, who is here to give people back their voice. It's one, one voice that keeps getting left out of the process, and I'd like to bring that back.
Thank you. Why do you feel that you are best qualified for this office?
Well, I do feel that I'm uniquely qualified because of my experience as a mother. I've had kids in various forms of education. We've, I've lived in Heber, like I said, for the last 14 years, and we've had kids in four of the district schools there. I've also used a public online school for the last couple of years with a few of my kids. And, and I have a unique perspective, because I've had so many different kids at different age levels and seen the system at different areas. And, and I really believe that it's important that we have the parents' perspective, like I said. I believe in the founding fathers. I believe in our country. I believe in the Constitution. Education fads will come and go, but what is timeless is the Constitution and constitutional principles, that the family has to remain the central unit of society. And I'm here to stand up for the family, to make sure that the family and citizens have a voice in education and can direct their path of education. As a, as a board member, one of my guiding principles, my top guiding principle will be the family. As decisions come to me, I will ask myself, how will this decision affect a family's ability to direct and guide the education of their family, as is their right, according to the Constitution of, of Utah?
Thank you. And what would you say is the most, the single most important thing that you want voters to remember about you?
I would say that I'm a unique, fresh face. I am here to represent the people. I will listen to you. I have had, you know, there's lots of people in the education system that feel like their voice is heard, but there are numberless people that don't feel like their voice is being heard. They feel like everything that they're reaching out to try to say is a problem with their children or with their school or their job, if they're a teacher, is being forgotten and swept aside as unimportant. I have teachers, counselors come to me all the time, and in secret, they feel like they can't let their voice be heard. I would like to give the voice back to the voiceless and make sure that the people in Utah are not letting powerful government entities, and also powerful private entities, control education. But we're turning the education system back over to the people that it belongs to, and that is we, the people. And the farther decisions are made away from the classroom, the less likely it is that you or I have a voice in that system. And so I would like to, as a state board member, push decision-making power back down to the local boards.
Alisa, thank you for being here, and we really appreciate you making the trip all the way out to Seattle.
Oh, I appreciate you having me on. Thank you.